Yeah. I've got the thumbs ups. It's one o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order at one. We acknowledge that the land we stand upon is the traditional territory of the Arundran, Anshnabe, Bodunshoni, and Lapewa peoples who have longstanding relationships to the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nations communities of this area include the Chipwas of the Thames First Nation, United Nation of the Thames First Nation, and Manci Delaware Nation. We acknowledge the treaties that are specific to this area, Treaty Two, the McKee Purchase, Treaty Three, Between the Lakes Purchase, Treaty Six, London Township Purchase, Treaty Twenty-One, Longwoods Purchase, and Treaty Twenty-Nine, Huron Track Purchase. We value the significant contributions both in the past and present of local and regional First Nations of Turtle Island. We acknowledge historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous peoples endure in Canada, and we affirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures, and to moving forward in a spirit of reconciliation and respect. I'm looking for provisions of pecuniary interest. Does anyone have anything to declare? I don't see any hands. Then we can move to the approval of the agenda. The motion before us is that the agenda be approved as presented. Oh, we so do that before. Okay, sorry. There is. Where did it go? Here it is.
Yes.
Uh, through Madam Warden, apologies for interjecting. Uh, the motion's been amended that item ninety-one, the closed session related to a potential litigation matter be deferred, and that the agenda be approved as amended.
Okay. So with that amendment, then a mover, uh, councillor Smiber, councillor Mayhew, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Okay. And now we are moving to the adoption of the minutes. Uh, the minutes before us are those of the October twenty-second meeting. There is a motion on your agenda. If I could have a mover in a second or please. Councillor Brennan, councillor, um. I just. Colin Grantham, thank you. I have to say her first name first. Too many hands. Okay, so, um, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Yeah, put it on your forehead. Thank you. Uh, all in favor? And there's no one opposed. Thank you very much. And now the, um, new items, uh, action items. The first item up today is the Rural Transit Transit Solutions Fund Funding, and we're getting, hearing a report from Cindy Howard, General Manager of Finance and Community Services Deputy C A R. The floor is ready. Yours when you're ready, Cindy.
Thanks, Warden, to council. Actually, I'm going to refer it over to Anum, but if you have questions, myself and Kara are here to answer them.
Thanks, and through the warden. This report is for Rural Transit Solutions Funding. In February of two thousand and twenty-four, Middlesex County applied to the Federal Rural Transit Solutions Fund under the Planning and Design Project Stream. On October sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four, received a letter from the Minister of Housing, Infrastructure, and Communities Canada confirming that Middlesex County has been approved in principle for up to fifty thousand dollars in funding. This funding will be used to hire consultants for a comprehensive assessment of the intercommunity transit and future transit development in the county. The consult, the consultants will consider the findings from the assessment to propose transportation solutions that align with available funding, address local and intercommunity transportation needs, and enhance both ridership and revenue. The findings of this assessment may also play a key role if the county decides to submit an application to the Ontario Transit Investment Fund. We are aiming to come back to council in April or May of next year to discuss the findings. We also received some positive news from the province regarding the community transportation grant program. The county has been informed that recipients now have the option to extend the program for an additional year if they have not used the full allocation by March of two thousand and twenty-five. The county is reviewing the budget and projections to determine how much funding may be available and how long the program can be extended. However, we anticipate that we can continue to operate the routes at least through the end of twenty-four, twenty-five post-secondary school year. We are also actively engaged with neighboring municipalities to explore collaborative opportunities regarding the intercommunity transit service. At this time, I'm asking council to approve the recommendations. Thanks. Myself, Kara, and Cindy are here to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I will look to council then. Are there questions? Councillor Burkhart Justin?
Thank you, and through the warden. Um. Uh, uh, obviously, uh, very supportive of signing this agreement, um, and understanding that, um, in, in your presentation, you're actually talking about two different funding pools. Um, so I, I, I want to address the federal one first. Um, so that's just consultant to look at what we're offering now and how we can better improve our service, um, what better speaks to the communities that we're serving. I'm assuming that's what the report will be. And, um, uh, and you're looking to bring that back in April.
Through the warden, um, to councillor, yes, you are correct. So at this time, we're asking council to approve us to receive the federal funding under rural transit, and we will be coming back to county council in probably about April and May with the findings from that consultant report.
Okay, then. And then since you brought it up, just with the extension of the provincial funding, just so that, um, I get a better understanding of it, um, as we're headed into budget discussions in the not-too-distant future, and our transit program obviously will be a topic of discussion. If I heard you correctly, the province is allowing us to extend the program if we haven't spent all of our money. Um, and I, I, I mean, I guess you don't know where we'll be by the end of the year, um, with that. But does that put us in jeopardy if we extend it for applying for the transportation funding that they announced, um, earlier this year?
Thanks, through the warden, and lots of great questions. So hopefully I can get to some of them. Kara or Anum can answer them. Um, in terms of what we got announcement, it was, as you know, the funding ends of March two thousand and twenty-five for our current community transportation. They sent us an email and said, if you have any funding that you think may still be available from your allotment, we would enter into an agreement to extend it for a year. So that would go into March two thousand and twenty-six. Um, so we have looked at our budget and we're pretty confident we will have some money that we can carry forward. We're just trying to make sure that we understand. We have to obviously talk to our, uh, service provider, Voygo, and talk to them about costs. So look at all of the costs that are associated with running the transit system and see how far that funding can extend. And as Anum was saying, um, we also will be looking at partnerships as well if we can do some kind of extension of the funding, really trying to get us, if we can at all possible, to the end of two thousand and twenty-five. However, you are absolutely correct, is we have to come back to county council in terms of funding if we need any money um, beyond March two thousand and twenty-five. That will be part of the business case around community transportation, which we'll be coming to the Budget Committee in December. In terms of how that will impact the, uh, the funding from the province, I'm not really sure. That funding is all really new. There still seems to be a lot of questions being asked about that funding. However, we just found out last week that, um, you have to apply before two thousand and twenty-four if you want any funding for the two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six period. Um, so we will be talking to the Budget Committee about that as well. So as you can well understand, there's a lot of stuff happening around community transportation. It's been happening fast and rapid. Um, so we're trying to pull all that information together, um, and be able to come to council with a lot more information to make some informed decisions. And we also have to, as I said, reach out to some of our partners and have some more thorough discussion with their partners. So what I mean by our partners, that would be the City of London, that would be the City of St. Thomas, uh, the County of Oxford, of, of course, in Middlesex County as well. So lots still to do, lots of discussions still to have. Um, but the good news is that there may be some funding that we can extend it at least a little bit longer. I know that we've had conversations here. We really want to make sure that there's a number of, uh, individuals that are going to post-secondary education, and they're using the community transit. And if we can do anything to make sure they can finish their year, I think that would be very beneficial to our community and those individuals that are in school right now. So we'll come back to with more information. I'm sorry I don't have all of it, um, but we're trying to do the best to gather everything, have our discussions, and bring something back to council.
Councillor Grantham?
Thank you, Warden. A comment and a question. The comment is, everyone knows Strathroy runs its own service. We happen to, uh, serve Thames, not Thames, I apologize. Middlesex Centre also. So I'm curious about the scope is the scope of this initiative, just the current um, municipalities who use interconnect? There's, there's a reason for that ask.
Through the warden to the councillor, um, when we applied for it, it was our current routes that we have. However, I'm sure that they will be looking at Middlesex County in general and coming back with some recommendations, which would also include Strathroy Care Dock and that route.
Yeah, and I, the reason for that comment, Warden, is that we did have a request from, uh, Middlesex Centre to serve Delaware as well as Kamoka. So I think to look at it as a whole would be wise. We don't know what is going to happen with the Strathroy Care Dock service. So I think looking at the county as a whole, knowing that we do service neighboring municipalities may be helpful.
Councillor Mayhew?
Thank you, Madam Warden, and, uh, southwest Middlesex has been left out of, uh, the transportation network, uh, and we would, uh, like some consideration going forward, uh, for that. Uh, we are strategically located as a centre between Sarnia, Chatham, and London, and, uh, it's a, it's, it's, it's in need, and, uh, I'm sure that, uh, the ridership would be good. But, uh, remember southwest Middlesex in your plan.
Is there anyone else? I just had one quick follow-up, if I may. Um, Cindy, you mentioned that the, uh, you have to get app, applications in twenty twenty-four, four, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. What's the deadline for that?
It's an ongoing application, sorry, through the warden. Uh, it's an ongoing application, so they're not giving us any deadlines. But however, on the last webinar, they noted that if we would like to receive, uh, uh, funding for twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year, we should be applying by the end of two thousand and twenty-four. However, it does not guarantee that we will receive the funding.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, if there is no one else, then the motion before us is that the Rural Transits Fund Funding Report be received for information, that Middlesex County has the capacity and authority to undertake a comprehensive assessment of intercommunity transit and future transit development in the county, utilizing Rural Transit Solutions Fund Funding, and that the General Manager of Finance and Community Services be authorized to enter into and execute an agreement for Rural Transit Solutions Fund Funding, and to execute payment claims, reports, and other documents required for the project. If I could have a mover, I have councillor, um, Burkhardt Justin and councillor Smiber all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, now, are there any inquiries? And motion. So that if there are no inquiries, we do have a notice of motion?
Hey, Madam Warden, one notice of motion was submitted by councillor Roth in accordance with the procedural bylaw. It will appear on the next agenda for council consideration. That motion is, uh, projected on the screen, but I will also read it, uh, that the North Middlesex Request for Capital Works Reserve Fund Middlesex County Loan Program, uh, report be received for information and that staff be directed to prepare a loan agreement between the municipality of North Middlesex and the County of Middlesex for a loan in the amount of two million five hundred thousand for the North Middlesex Park Hill Fire and Middlesex London Paramedic Service Station for council consideration. So that item will appear for discussion purposes on the next county council agenda.
Thank you for that. Um, moving to councillors' comments and other business, is there anyone who'd like to raise anything? I don't see any hands. Oh, sorry, councillor Rob, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, through you to, uh, I guess all of our remembrance day services that we had throughout the county. I want to thank everybody who put those together and made them happen, and I, I think they were all of our communities. And to the people who didn't, also to the veterans who attended and those who couldn't. I just want to thank them all for doing that.
And thank you for your comments. Um, the motion before us now to, oh, to move us into the committee of hold is that the committee of the hold convene at one fifteen P M. And that is moved by councillor McMillan and councillor Clark. Thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, we don't have any delegations and there are no reports from county officers. We can go to action items. The first one is the award of the R F P A D M N two thousand and twenty-four zero-three Consulting Services for the County of Middlesex Strategic Plan, and that is a report from our C A O. Uh, the floor is yours when you're ready.
Thank you, Warden. The last, or one of the last items of council's priorities for two thousand and twenty-four is the strategic planning um, process getting moving, and I'm really pleased to report that we're today, this report is about selecting the right consultant to help council as they move forward with it. I want to start by thanking Josh White and, um, his role as the procurement, um, manager or director. What's his title, Jess? I don't know, something procurement related. And, um, and he did a fantastic job. And, and just to make sure that we don't have any bias in the system, we also uh, appreciated the help of a number of folks that are listed in the report that also provided their review of the criteria and made sure that we're on the right track with getting the right consultant for council. As you can see, we looked at experience and qualifications, the project plan, um, their experience and project pricing and developed Josh and, uh, his group developed a fantastic uh, valuation criteria. And in the end, um, we're really pleased that Corey Consulting was the one selected. I think it's a, a great team that has, um, uh, uh, fantastic background and will be a great guide for council through this process, and the price was appropriate for the services being delivered. And Paul's going to, as we move forward with this, Paul's going to be at the vortex of supporting the consultants and supporting council as we move forward with this, and we're hopeful that by getting this report out to you today, that we'll be able to start the heavy lifting, the warden and I have talked about the, uh, immense amount of information gathering work and conversations that have to happen prior to council sitting down to talk about, uh, strategic planning. And so we're hopeful that we can get a lot of that done before the end of the year, uh, if we can move forward with this in a timely way today. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And thank you for that. I'll look to councillors for questions on this. Uh, councillor Smiber.
Thank you, uh, through the warden, uh, to the C A O. Um, I, I guess when I thought we, when we gave direction to staff, it was kind of starting to do the planning, not necessarily letting the R F P. So, um, I'm just wondering, because I thought that was going to help inform what the budget number would be, so that when this item was considered for the budget, then we would know what number would be appropriate for that. So I'm just wondering, um, can that be deferred until budget? Um, is there a need to, to do that now?
To do that now, to do the?
To, to execute the R F P. So I thought the direction was to, uh, start with it, the planning in terms of finding out what that number was to be included with the, the two thousand and twenty-five budget, and then, um, executing on that during the year of two thousand and twenty-five.
I guess the challenge, Warden, would be just in terms of timing of getting started, and um, the goals that we had were to try and get as much work done before the end of the year, so council could hit the ground running. And so that would be the only challenge. I don't see any other challenges. I, I'm not aware. Um, Josh isn't here. I don't think Josh is here with us in the room, but I'm not aware of any other legal challenges. Paul, are you aware of any legal challenges we've, that you can think of?
To you, Madam Warden, if the award was delayed? Not off the top of my head, no.
So if that's the wish of council, then we certainly can do that. It would just set the timelines back. I don't, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head.
I'll look to councillors. Any thoughts on that? Councillor Brennan?
I think if we've gone through the, uh, R F P and, and got quite a number of, uh, people responded and, and they found that Corey is the best one to go with, I don't see a reason for hesitating. Uh, we know what the cost is going to be, so that can be incorporated in the budget, so I don't see a need to defer it at this time.
Other thoughts? Okay, there's no one else, so we do have a motion before us. Um, that the award of R F P A D M N two thousand and twenty-four, number three, Consulting Services for the County of Middlesex Strategic Plan Report be received for information, that the Chief Administrative Officer be authorized and directed to award the request for proposal of that, um, A D M N two thousand and twenty-four to Corey Consulting, Inc., in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred before taxes, and that the Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to execute on behalf of the County of Middlesex all agreements and other documents necessary to implement this award on confirmation that such agreements and other documents be in a form satisfactory to the county solicitor. Do I have a mover, please? Uh, councillor Clark and councillor Brennan, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? And that is. Um, number nine, C two, is the major red line revision, uh, to plan of condominium. And this is a report from Dirk Wender, Wenderberch, Director of Planning and Development.
Thank you through the warden. Uh, this is a, a development that county council initially draft plan approved in, um, twenty, October of two thousand and twenty-one. And the approval at that time would have created fifteen vacant land condominium units for industrial or, or sort of small or industrial growth. As the, um, if you've been by the site, there's a lot of, uh, sort of earth moving and work, uh, underway there, although the actual development hasn't yet started. As they got into it, they did, um, need to do some additional geotechnical work and hydrological, just to deal with, with water and whatnot. So they ended up looking, seeking and, and are seeking an amendment, what would, uh, what would be in a major amendment to the plan. It would increase the number of units or lots from fifteen to eighteen, and it would substantially, uh, change the road pattern. So given the extent of the changes, it was thought prudent to go back through the plan act process. Local council had another public meeting, and then in, um, I think it last month in October did support this major amendment. Um, in terms of, uh, the draft plan conditions would essentially be unchanged, some minor technical things to reflect the, the new layout, and therefore all of the planning analysis in terms of the provincial policy statement and the planning documents are, are the same. So I am recommending approval, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
And thank you for that report. Are there questions, comments, concerns? Uh, seeing none, that we have a motion before us that the revised plan of condominium be granted, draft plan approval subject to conditions, and that the notice of decision be circulated as required by the planning act, and that the notice of decision indicate that all written submissions received on the application were considered, the effect of which helped make an informed recommendation and decision. Sir mover, councillor Smiber, and councillor Mayhew, thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. And the next item is another, um, uh, planning item, this with respect to municipality of Strathroy Care Dock. We want to take it away, Dirk.
Thank you through the warden. Um, pivoting here, this is a, a residential development of some size in Mount Bridges. Hundred and nine lots for single attached dwellings, also three blocks for medium, uh, density development, uh, but likely in the form of townhouses, although that isn't, uh, that, the details of those development blocks is not yet known. There are also natural heritage, um, setback areas, stormwater management ponds, et cetera. Um, so the report, uh, to, attached to it are all the supporting information, including the report that, uh, Tim Williams did to local Strathroy Care Dock Council. It goes into more detail, of course, than mine, uh, report does. The file was initially accepted in two thousand and twenty-two. It was, uh, a public consultation process was undertaken, and ultimately it was supported by Strathroy Care Dock, uh, council late in September of two thousand and twenty-four. The proposal was subject to a couple of amendments during that local processing, and it really dealt with stormwater, uh, water balance and some concerns, uh, and issues raised by nearby landowners. So in the end, the municipality was satisfied. The Upper Thames River Conservation Authority are also satisfied that the outstanding issues can be dealt with as drop plan conditions as opposed to prior to drop plan approval. So my report does, uh, again, at a high level, go over the planning policy documents. I am recommending draft plan approval, subject to the conditions which are attached.
Thank you. Again, I'll look to council. Seeing no hands, then, um, there is a motion before us that the proposed plan of subdivision be granted, draft plan approval subject to conditions, and the notice of decision be circulated as required by the planning act, and that the notice of decision indicate that all written submissions received on the application were considered, the effect of which helped make an informed recommendation and decision. Uh, movers please, and a second or councillor Grantham, councillor, councillor Maguire, all in favor? And that is carried. And we have an investment report now, again, from Cindy. Um, if you'd like to take that, uh, the, the mic, and the floor is yours when you're ready.
Great, thanks, uh, through the warden to council. In front of council is the two thousand and twenty-three investment report. In two thousand and twenty-three, portfolio earned an average of three point four percent. The county works with Scotia MacLeod on our investments. The county has a good mix of cash, short-term, and long-term investments. The county earned interest income for both operating and our reserve funds, and they're listed in the report. The recommendation is for council to approve the investment report as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And thank you for that report. Are there questions on the investments? Seeing no hands, then there is a motion before us that the two thousand and twenty-three investment report be received for information, and that the two thousand and twenty-three investment report be approved as presented. Uh, councillor Rob, councillor Smiber, thank you. All in favor of that? And opposed? Okay. Thank you. And now another report, uh, from Cindy on the, um, third quarter budget variance, uh, report.
Thanks, Warden, to council. Um, the budget variance for the third quarter, January to September two thousand and twenty-four, is being presented. At this time, you'll see that there is an overall surplus that's been identified. However, I do want to point out that there's still three months of expenses outstanding, and of course, all the year-end accounting entries that we have to do as well. So though that may impact the budget and our surplus as you see it. A couple of funding issues that have been identified in the report. So one is planning. Um, we mentioned it last time, but they may have some budget pressures due to the volume of the Ontario Land Tribunal Appeals and the potential need to use some outside legal counsel. The social service budget you'll see includes additional provincial funding, and of course, we have additional expenditures, and that's related to the QUOC program, which is the Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Program, which is obviously is a good news. It allows individuals to have, um, their licensed childcare fees reduced. The lodge budget includes some additional provincial funding as well, and the funding from the Ministry of Health for Land Ambulance was received in August, and it mentions that as well. So thanks, and happy to ha, answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Uh, I'll look to council for questions. I see no hands, so the motion before us is that the third quarter budget variance report be received for information. A mover, please. Uh, councillor Grantham, councillor Mayhew, thank you. All in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to correspondence and information items. Is there anything here anyone wants to speak to or comment on? Councillor Grantham?
Yeah, uh, nine D point two zero, the Hydro One project, Warden? My question will be to the county engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, and I apologize, Chris, I think an opportunity, but I know this is of import to southwest Middlesex and Strathroy Care Dock. Have you had many discussions about this in your role?
Yeah, through the warden to, to councillor Grantham. Yeah, we've been involved with, uh, with this project for, I think, a few years now, um, and ongoing discussions. As you know, this is a, a very large-scale project that's going to take decades for them to complete. So they are just reaching out the next stage now, and all the warden and myself have been invited to, uh, have a meeting with, with Hydro One, and, uh, and their consultants just haven't been able to arrange that time and date as of yet, but yeah, we're well aware of what's going on there, and some very significant challenges, uh, just because of the scale of infrastructure they're proposing for this project. Um, and again, we're very concerned about, especially about impacts to agricultural operations across uh, the western part of Middlesex County and our neighbors further to the west.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you, Warden.
I see councillor, uh, councillor Burkhardt Justin's hand. Go ahead.
Thanks, and through the warden, this is, um, for Cindy. We all received at our local municipalities the same letter, um, that's included in our correspondence from Minister Beth Enfali about, um, the O M P F funding. Just wondering if you found out what our funding is for next year?
Thanks, through the warden to council. Yes, we have. If you give me a minute, I could open up the email and let you know. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
You can come back with it too. I just
Do you want to take a moment?
Thanks. Yes, let me take a moment. I actually don't have the internet opened up.
If there's, if there's another item that anyone wants to ask about? I don't see any hands. Maybe we'll just wait for a moment.
Sorry about that. We'll probably have to get back to you because they actually sent us a letter, but I believe I actually have to go into the site and pull it back up. And then I know the next question you're going to ask me is how does that tie into the previous year as well? So how about I come back at next meeting? And I'll do an analysis of the last five years of O M P F funding to show you what that looks like. Because I know you're going to have some questions about it.
That sounds like a plan. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, in that case, unless there are other questions? Seeing none, the motion before us is that items 9D.1 through 9D.21 be received for information. Counselor Maguire and Counselor Smiber, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Okay, the next portion of the meeting is going to be enclosed regarding 9E.1 potential, oh, sorry, that's deferred. Yeah, so we're doing 9E.2, Human Resources Matter, a personal matter pertaining to identifiable individuals, including municipal employees and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose with respect to the Human Resources Matter in accordance with subsections 239, 2B and F of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended. If I could have a mover to go into close, Counselor Robb and Counselor Clark, thank you. All in favor?